I have seven thirty if you're ready.
Okay, all right.
I started, started to record, so the meeting's being recorded now.
Okay, and would you like to do roll call, please?
Mr. Maroli.
Here.
Mr. Now.
Here.
Mr. Tolmer.
Here.
Mr. Lennon. He said he'll be late. And Mr. Livingston.
Okay, not yet, okay.
And I'm Joe Cowher, so we have a quorum.
Okay, good, all right, so let's see here, um, do we have anybody that wants to make any public comments this evening?
Uh, Bob Fryer, I don't know if I'm the only person that wants to do that.
It looks like, unless, did anybody sign up, Joe?
Uh, no, just that we could follow the agenda, name an address for the record.
Name an address, you have three minutes.
Not, no, certainly, excuse me, uh, Bob Fryer, F R Y E R, uh, I'm presently living in, uh, five oh eight Hunter's Path in South Fayette Township, uh, and I wanted to, uh, as you know, I've been, um, spending years trying to, uh, um, study and improve, uh, city planning features to help the people in Bridle, but I just wanted to quickly mention that, with the big two trillion dollar infrastructure, uh, thing coming through Congress, uh, Brit, 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 uh, you guys, uh, have got to put together a spectacular economic improvement, plan, uh, and, uh, I, I, I think, uh, it would be recognized with the so-called experts, that are going to take a look at it and decide if it's worth spending federal, state and county money on it. Uh, Bridgeville has an ideal location, I just want to go over these four with you briefly, uh, because I don't have that much time. The region's primary road, Washington Pike, and all eight of the other secondary roads lead to Bridgeville, because it was here a hundred years before any of the other communities around here. The exit of the only north-south interstate highway in western Pennsylvania, I-79, is the Bridle exit, and it's located five hundred yards from Bridle Central Business District. Uh, third, the, the municipal, uh, our municipal neighbors in the market area are Mount Lebanon Upper St. Clair and Bethel Park, where the largest member of the highest income families in western Pennsylvania live, spending a maximum amount of retail dollars on services and goods. And the, uh, South Hills area, you know, communities, Bridle is the only one with a street, parallel to its main street, that is on the same level, which if you, uh, decide to continue the, uh, two-way couple comprehensive feature in our, that's order in our plan, it will provide consumers with a convenient way to look around and drive back to the business district, to find a parking space or pick up the passengers, and, uh, two of its neighbors, uh, two of Bridle's neighbors, South Fat and Collier, have two of the fastest-growing populations in El Guine County. My recommendation, again, as I'm sure you've heard many times, you cannot, this is not the time to be conservative about the comprehensive plan. You've got to put everything in it in terms of solving the transportation, uh, problem, and the parking deficiency problem possible, you, this is not the time to be conservative in any way, and I, I hope you guys, uh, agree with me, but one, one last thing, if I can take another sixty seconds. The, the two-way couple, uh, Washington Avenue in, um, Shady is already part of Bridle's comprehensive plan, and I've found copies from Beckman and Associates, Classic Development, uh, G A I Engineering, and Macon Engineering, that all, that have all, have sent us drawings starting back in, like, years ago, all recommending, that's like the only way you're going to solve the problem, because Bridle has two four-lane highways on opposite ends, and a two-lane street in between. I don't know if anybody, not, excuse me, I just, uh, want to mention that, and, uh, I'll, I'd like to listen to your, your discussions of some of these issues, uh, as the meeting goes on, and thanks for the time, Justin.
All right, thank you, Bob. All right, so let's move on to the adoption of the minutes. Are there any corrections, uh, to the last meeting, uh, minutes on March twenty-second? No changes, no questions, no comments? All right, I need a motion to approve, please.
A moved, Dale.
Dale approves, second?
Second.
All right, anybody oppose? All right, the motion passes. All right, so now let's move on to new business, there's actually no new business, so we'll move on to the old business. Now, the first item on the old business is the comprehensive plan update. And we received, uh, or Joe received a, uh, email from Bill Henderson, President of the Council, requesting that we join with the council members, to form a committee to discuss the comprehensive plan. And I don't think that Bill, I got an email from Bill earlier saying that he was not going to be on. Joe, do you want to add anything to that, as, I mean, I know certain things, but you probably have more information than I do.
Sure, I, I think what we're hoping to do is make it a joint effort between Planning Commission and Borough Council. The councils already established a subcommittee or a working group that's made up of three council members, Mr. Shashowski, Mr. Colosimo, Mr. Henderson. We're hoping that we could get a similar, uh, panel from Planning Commission, that, uh, by the end of the month, have this committee established so that next month and the month thereafter, we can whittle down the six proposals we, we received, uh, figure out which ones we want to interview, interview, and then have a candidate on board, so that, uh, once we have a determination on the funding, or where we're going to go with this, come late summer, we're ready to go, so that's, uh, that's the plan.
All right. Um, now, I did ask Bill a couple of questions, um, you know, probably there's going to be three, Planning Committee members, Commission members, and that, it can be held either Zoom or in-person, because I know there are certain people that prefer either way, uh, but there are some valuable members here that we want to be included in this process, so, um, if it has to be Zoom, I don't think that Bill has any issues. Um, but preferably it would be a, um, in-person meeting. And that's about all that I know, um, outside of the fact what Joe said. All right, any team members actually want to say if they're interested or not at this point? Or do you need more info?
Oh, Justin, I would just say who, you're talking three people?
Yes.
Is there anybody that doesn't want to do it?
Yeah, I was, I'm definitely throwing my hat in the ring, it's something I'm, I'm very interested in staying close to and contributing wherever I can.
All right.
I'd be interested in participating, um, my only issue right now is, 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 I would not be able to do anything, attend any in-person meetings during the day before four,
Okay, all right.
Thirty in the afternoon.
All right. All right.
My preference would be for Zoom, but, you know, we've got masks, we've got, you know.
Yeah. All right, and, uh, Mike, do you want to join that, or, or shall I?
If you, if you don't want, Justin, I'll be more happy to do it, it's up to you.
Um, I actually would like to join.
Then go right ahead.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, so with those, that's resolved, and then we'll get together with.
Justin, sorry, real quick, are they looking limited to three, it feels like the kind of thing where, people who have, you know, definitive interests, the, the more the better, to a certain degree, right? At some point, returns, but is six versus seven that much of a difference? Mike, if I'm talking you into something you don't want to be a part of.
Oh, no, not at all. I already have my opinion on, you know, if you're going to whittle it down to three, I already have my opinion on who those three should be.
I have no problem with four, it's just that matching what the council has already established, that's why. I mean, we'll do four then, I mean, because I do believe that we all, but.
Maybe that's the feedback, Justin, there's four people who have expressed interest, if they have some heartburn about going from six to seven, then okay, we'll figure it out, but.
All right.
Man, better, better, more interest than less, I guess I would.
You know, I'll, i- if, if somebody needs to step back, I could certainly do that, you know.
Me as well.
This is a good, the other, the other item that you'll see on your agenda is the fact that we need to discuss the active transportation plan, which will also require a committee from the Planning Commission. So, I guess we should finalize the comprehensive plan, we'll just tell, um, Bill that we're going to select four, see what happens, and then now do what, can we move on to the active transportation plan? All right, um, now, Joe, I have a question about that, is that going to be another cooperation between council and planning?
That was our, our intentions, yeah.
All right, good, all right, so.
But, uh, Justin, this one's actually, this one's in motion right now, it's out to bid as we speak.
Correct.
Uh, proposals are due back, uh, middle of May.
Correct.
So, uh, this one's going to be a very fast process, funding's in place, contracts are in place with the county, uh, the county's on board with everything, so, uh, this one will, actually will be doing, but much sooner before the comprehensive plan, so.
So, um, all right, so if, once we get, um, okay, so what's the earliest you're going to need, that they would need a committee?
June.
June, for the committee, okay, and then decision by?
July, it'd be nice to have it for the July council meeting, an award contract at July council meeting.
Okay.
So essentially, uh, the whole month of June would basically be flush out proposals, interview, and have, uh, a recommendation to council for our July, you know, second Monday meeting.
Okay.
That, that's ideal.
Okay, perfect.
Now, stuff happens, we understand, but, uh, if we, we want to keep on track, uh, that, that's the, uh, the plan.
Okay, now, um, do we want, are the same four people still interested, committee mem, commission members, the four commission members interested in joining with the active transportation plan?
I see why not, it's, it's, it's one and the same in all reality.
Okay. I mean, it's just other people have some kids and, and commitments, so.
Yeah, I would, between the two of them, I would, I would, uh, prefer the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Given the option.
Okay, all right, well then, we'll, we'll pencil you in, Tim, all right, for the third one. I mean, for the second one, all right.
No, I said that in reverse, my, my preference is the comprehensive plan, you're saying leave it tentative for that second, I got you.
Okay. Joe, anything, uh, I mean, any comments or questions that you have with us?
No, not at all, I, I think, uh, everyone's got a chance to, to review the RFP, so they understand, you know, what we're hoping to do with the project, and, uh, there seems to be some, uh, input or interest from some, from the firms that we've solicited, so it should be a decent response like we did for the comp plan.
Okay, perfect. All right, so let's see, uh, now, lastly, um, the high-yield, low-cost projects. Anybody do any, uh, thinking about those projects and how to work with them and what to do? Any comments? I mean, we can always shell them until next month. It's really up to you guys. All right.
I don't have, I don't have a comment right now.
Okay, all right, well then, uh, all right, so let me just, just do a little bit of housekeeping. Um, so I did talk to the Laura Deklava from the, um, Parking Authority, and Laura did request that we do, hold off doing anything until about twelve months' time period, when businesses keep getting, getting back into swing of things. Um, I personally am looking to better understand the historic actions of the Parking Committee, I want to know what happened when business was pre-pandemic. And I think that they should be able to provide that information, so I will get back with the Parking Committee again. Um, I think that I had a meeting with Joe Cowher after the last council meeting, and better understand that we already do have a per, protocol in place for the meeting, uh, public speakers. All right, and, uh, the only other thing that I have is that, um, we did talk a little bit last month about, um, anything left over from the year, from the twenty-twenty, uh, year, that we needed to address or discuss, or something that may have been forgotten. Anybody come up with anything?
I think, I think a lot of those projects from twenty-twenty are in, are in that high-yield, low-cost project, uh, group.
Right, right, I mean, I did, uh, one of the things that I had always been thinking about last year was the signs, the signage for Bridgeville, and that was finally resolved, that was one of my, my pet things, and I think twenty nineteen, and this year their signs are going up, so, and they do look very nice, and great job, Joe. So, um, all right, any questions or comments?
I have one.
Go ahead.
You, you mentioned protocols for, for speakers.
Yes.
Um, you said that there are some already in place?
Well, there was that we identified, well, when you, when we were in person, people actually signed their names and gave what the, an agenda item that they wanted to discuss. Like Jane Doe wanted to talk about chickens, all right, so, um, what we did, uh, was simply, I noticed on the list that Joe showed me that there was an agenda item listed. It's just that perhaps maybe when we are still in Zoom methods, that we identify, we have the speaker identify what they want to talk about.
Okay.
Okay.
You probably talked about that earlier, and I apologize for being late, uh, it just.
No, 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 we talked about, we talked about it last month, not this month, so, okay. All right.
Justin, just a general question quickly, I, I know the whole toll booth concept of the Bridgeville interchange is already on the radar of, of council, uh, at a higher level, do we as Planning Commission have any uh, obligations, the wrong word, uh, outside of just as borough residents contacting our own representatives? Is there anything that we should be doing more aggressively from Planning Commission to put forward our perspectives? I, I suspect council, in conjunction with some of the other boroughs and townships, is already doing that. Um, I just didn't want to be asleep at the wheel.
Right, right.
You know, what, what is a potentially very large impact to this area. I'm not quite sure where Planning Commission fits into that whole thing, I'm open to perspectives from Joe or other commission members.
Right, right, I think, Joe, can you help us answer that?
Sure, uh, Borough Council, I, I think you probably read about it, adopted a resolution, uh, basically opposing it, and it lists out, you know, the, uh, the reasons why they're against, against it, mainly, you know, Route fifty traffic, uh, the, uh, the negative effects it's going to have on the community, uh, and so on. But we want to have bearing on a regional scale, so we partnered with South Fayette, Collier, and Upper St. Clair, and, uh, all four towns adopted the same resolution, and we had a cover letter that went, uh, to all the senators, uh, the, the governor, the secretary of transportation, our congressman, our, our US senators, uh, the Pendleton District Executive, and it was signed by, you know, all four towns. Uh, if Planning Commission wanted to maybe put a, a similar letter of, hey, they're opposition, uh, we could send that on your behalf, but I don't know how much more, uh, it could be done from the town level. I, I know all the elected officials have been very active with the state officials, forcing our opposition to it, so, uh, no one's sitting on their hands, it's been very active, but if Planning Commission wants to get involved, I, I think it would be a similar, uh, similar action where, you know, you could make a motion to, hey, you, you think it's a bad idea, or, or what have you, and, and a letter could be sent on, on your letterhead, uh, to the same officials, and, and I'd be more than willing to help if, if that's something you'd want to do.
I, I think it.
Go ahead.
I, I think it can, can only help, right?
Right.
Um, it's, it's helpful to get that background, because I did read the summary of it, Joe, I knew that we had taken a stance as a borough and as a kind of a community on a larger perspective, um, i- if it's a, you know, fairly simple gesture that doesn't back you up, I'd be all for it of just kind of echoing and, and growing that voice, um, but it's helpful to get the background that you did on the specific, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, I mean, I personally, uh, sent them an email, but not as a committee member, so, or commission member, so.
If, if you'd like, I, I could draft a letter with, by this week or next week, I'll get you a draft, I'll email to the group, and then if you're okay with it, uh, I could have Justin sign it, and I'll send it out for you.
Okay, all right, okay, Tim?
Thanks, Joe. I'm good, thank you.
All right, all right, so anybody else have any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Uh, one other question, uh, is there anything new with new developments as far as Baldwin Street-McLaughlin Run, Joe?
No.
Okay.
I, I, I think it goes back to, uh, where, uh, public comment was with, uh, with Mr. Fryer, the council's going to be probably trying to lobby for, uh, the federal stimulus funds, not the stimulus money, the infrastructure money, to do something for that large flood plan.
Okay.
That, that's where we're at with that. I, I know I've followed up with the engineer about a month ago, uh, to say, hey, where were you at with your plans to show, like, you, you know, uh, uh, option four, what's, where we left it in October, where putting in like a quasi-lake or what, what have you, somewhere upstream, up McLaughlin Run, and, uh, hi- his modeling wasn't really supporting that. But, uh, they were going to get me a definitive answer, but it wasn't looking like it was going to be the solve-all, uh, solve-all.
Okay.
Um, so, I do have a question, since we do have three different plans for flood mitigation in the borough, and, um, as far as I know, nobody has definitely said we're going this route or that route, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so now, how do we get out of this sort of logjam? So that it looks like we can do something?
Oh, I, I think it's rather simple, uh, they, one, let's confirm that option four, you can always have an endless supply of options, so like, I don't want to open Pandora's box here, so let's just keep it simple, that, uh, let's confirm that where we left in October, that option four is doable or not.
Okay.
We, we can come back, and then we can say, hey, which one of these do we support? We vote on it and make a, a recommendation to council that option one, two, or three is, uh, is, is the quote-unquote flood plan that we would like the Borough Council to consider, and then council can take it or, or, or choose elsewise.
Okay.
But, uh, really, from, from memory, the three options were, one, let's, uh, leave everything as it is, but take the creek, like, oh, what was it, repair Bower Hill Road, basically dig it down like seven feet to get a good road base, put it back, raise the Baldwin Street Bridge so that it's higher for high-water events, rem, have the county repair, or, or, I mean, replace the bridge, uh, up here at Bower Hill Road, so that center pier is out of there, and, uh, it puts all the levees in, it puts the pumps on, you know, the, the dry side, so that water on the dry side can be pumped into the creek, a- and there's flood walls, basically from the roller skating rink all the way up to the park, you know, this is, uh, not precise, but generally speaking.
Right.
Option two, uh, did away with the Baldwin Street Bridge, and, uh, made Baldwin Street into a dead-end street cul-de-sac. Uh, and that's the only difference, and then option three was kind of the larger, uh, grandiose plan that did away with Bower Hill Road, put a roundabout in where, uh, Baldwin Street intersects with McLaughlin Run, uh, and then sends all the Bower Hill traffic down McGo, uh, Bar, uh, Baldwin Street, but it takes a lot of properties to make the traffic flow. So those are the three plans that were, uh, shared with us. So let me see where we are with the fourth option we asked him to consider.
Okay.
And then, uh, we can have it come back, and then we can take a vote on it, and then it's, it's off our plate, and, uh, it's up for council to say, hey, this is the official flood plan of the borough, and we're going to work to, to get the money to make it happen. Uh, each one was roughly twenty to twenty-five million dollars, so it's going to take a lot of legwork on, uh, on how to finance it, so i- i- it would be nice to have that official recommendation on such a large-scale capital project from Planning Commission. So we, we've had the plans presented to us, we had the engineer here, we asked the engineer to do some work, which he is doing, we just need to, to get it back and show me on paper that it's done, and then we need to ma, take a vote.
Okay, all right.
At least that's my perspective of where I would think we would take this.
Okay, now.
I'd be open to anything, but, uh, that, that, that seems the most logical.
Okay, so now, the other question that I have is that, can, is that something that we ask for with the, uh, infrastructure money? Or no, or is that total?
No, 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 that's, uh, that is where I've been getting, uh, in conversation with council members, is that, hey, the federal government is putting together, uh, a large-scale infrastructure plan, not the stimulus money.
Right.
Uh, the, and maybe this is the ticket to make this happen. So they haven't come out yet with the infrastructure plan, you know, that I'm aware of, that, uh, that we can start applying for.
Right.
We need to start getting our ducks in a row fast, you know, within the next month or two, so that, you know, when the funding does open up, we have a plan, we, we vetted it, we, as a community, said, hey, this is what we want, you know, majority vote has spoken, and, uh, council can take that and direct me to start applying for grants.
Okay, all right. And, and can you, is it a, there a possibility of perhaps throwing in some more, um, um, Bower Hill slash infrastructure changes with that same project?
I, I don't see why not, you know, because if we're going to do this, this is, we're going to do it together, you know.
Okay.
And, uh, that was the whole idea, when you look at option one, what was getting that fixed.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, thanks for that. Any other questions? All right, um, all right, so I'm going to open it up to any other public members again?
Is, uh, is your, excuse me, this is Bob again, is your meeting coming to an end right now?
I, yep.
Okay, I, I, I didn't know that, yeah, I just want to, um, mention, uh, two other things, excuse me, the, um, uh, when, when you guys eventually pick, I guess, the city planning firm that you want to have update your comprehensive plan, it's essential that you tell them that you want, uh, Bridgeville transformed into a, uh, to have a, a business district, or two business districts that can successfully compete in this South Hills area, suburban area, that means you have, uh, studies have shown, two of them have indicated that fifty percent of the people in the five-mile radius of Bridgeville have been driving around the town for fifty years because of the traffic problem. By solving the traffic problem, you'll end up having twice the number of consumer motorists drive through the community. That's point number one, point number two is, in terms of s- solving the br, the flood problem, I think you better get a fifth, uh, typical solution, because I, uh, the D E P, the University of Pittsburgh School of Engineering, and the study that I did, indicated that the Bower Hill Road Bridge is not the problem. It's the, uh, Commercial Street Bridge, so you, someone. It's the, uh, commercial street bridge. So you, someone is going to take a closer look at that. I, I, I'm abso- I'm certain that's not the problem. And the other thing I was going to mention. Bauer Hill Road is the bridge where for 25 years, the junk has been gathering the debris, you know? And with the new debris catcher up in the park, I, are you guys, do you guys feel confident? That that will stop the, the, the big stuff from getting into Bridgeville? What do you think?
Personally, I think that there's, there's nothing, like in medicine, nothing's a hundred percent guaranteed. That something's not going to happen. And, you know, we, we start, we planned for a hundred year flood and all of a sudden now we're planning for a 500 year flood. And there's no guarantee, in all honesty, that, that whatever we do is going to resolve all the.
Yeah. Well, I just, I don't want to take up any more of your time before you adjourn, but, uh, the. I don't think you have to spend 25 million dollars making a major improvement in reducing the flooding. In Virgil. I, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm convinced of that and, and experts, uh. I agree with them or they agree with me. So I think you had to, uh, yeah, uh, open up, uh. I'm, I'm sure you'll, you'll take other suggestions. I think you should do that.
All right. Great. All right. Thank you, Bob Fryer. And.
Hey, hey, what?
All right. Um, anybody else have any comments before we end, before we adjourn? All right. So I need a motion to adjourn. All right.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Second.
Dale's muted, so I'll confirm his second.
Or maybe nobody wanted to leave.
Super moon, come on.
All righty. Well, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much for.
Thank you, Justine.
Thank you, Justine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Go look at that super moon.
Thank you guys. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Hey, hey, well, once again, congratulations, you guys. Yeah, I think you're on a, on a new page, going in a new direction. Uh, for the benefit of the community and, uh, um.